Thank you, Dr. Smizer, members of the community. This evening, we're going to start with our outstanding scholars, students. So Ms. Reed, if you'd join me. And this evening, we have four different types of scholars that we're going to be recognizing. The first is the Betcher Scholarship, and that's sponsored by the Denver-based Betcher Foundation, which is a merit-based scholarship available to Colorado's graduating seniors who provide service to their community and school and are in the top 5% of their class. And they receive top scores on college entrance exams, display leadership, and demonstrate character. There are only 40 scholarships offered in all of Colorado. And this year, from Pooter High School, we have Naitra Ramchander. And it's my understand that Naitra is not here this evening, but let's go ahead and give her a round of applause because it's an exemplary achievement. So next, we have the Daniels Fund Scholars. So really quickly, the Daniel Scholarship is awarded to PSD seniors who have demonstrated a strong character and a determination to succeed in life. They receive funding to attend the college or university of their choice. And the Daniel Scholarship is a supplemental scholarship to all other financial resources. After financial aid resources have been applied, the scholarship covers the remaining expenses. And students also receive a laptop computer and a printer. We have three Daniels Fund Scholars. Two were unable to be with us, so we'll start with them. We have Taylor Hanson from Pooter High School and Kristy Perry from Pooter High School, who are unable to be here this evening. But from Fossil Ridge, Dr. Julie Chaplin is our interim principal. And is Jamie with you this evening? So Jamie, if you'd like to come up, and Dr. Chaplin will say a few words and introduce you.
Well, Jamie Bonjour definitely represents one of the highest-character awarded students within our school. She's been phenomenal at so many extracurricular activities and events as well as academic scholarship. And so we're really honored to have her family continue their tradition at Fossil Ridge and for Jamie as well. And Jamie, do you want to tell them where you went to school throughout PSD?
Sure. So I went to Trout Elementary School, and then Canard Middle School, and then Fossil Ridge High School. So yeah. I'm going to Indiana University to study business next year. Thank you, guys.
Next, we have the National Hispanic Recognition Scholars. And I don't believe we have anybody here this evening, but we do. Taylor? Okay, so Dr. Chaplin's going to introduce Taylor Trujillo from Fossil Ridge. Taylor, are you here? Come on up.
Great. Well, Taylor is another great student here from Fossil Ridge High School. We're very proud and honored to have him contribute to diversity and leadership within our school. And we know that he'll carry on as well. And Taylor, do you want to talk to them about where you've been in Pooter School District and where you're going afterwards?
Yeah. So I, too, went to Trout Elementary, and then went to Liberty Middle School, and then Fossil Ridge High School, obviously. And then I'll either be going to Mines or Brown next fall.
I forgot to tell you that the National Hispanic Recognition Scholar Honor is awarded by the College Board and recognizes the top 5,000 Hispanic and Latino students out of 250,000 who take the PSAT during their junior year. So it's based on his PSAT scores. Okay. So now, we have our National Merit Scholar finalists. And National Merit Scholars score in the top 1% academically among Colorado seniors. Scholars can win two types of National Merit Scholarships: a one-time $2,500 award or a corporate-sponsored Achievement Scholarship. They've earned this elite designation through a two-year testing and application process. And we have quite a few with us this evening. So again, we'll start with Dr. Chaplin. We have several from Fossil Ridge. And then we'll go on to Liberty. Mr. Schaefer, I saw you sneak in. And then we'll end with Dr. Woodall, with Rocky.
Okay, great. We have a number of scholars, so I'll read all their names. And then we have a few here with us this evening. So Nick Lynn, who couldn't be with us this evening, Madeline Patine, Lucas Ray, Kaylee Cox. And then I know David Perkins is here, so come on up, David. Yes, and I think, is Dallin here, too? Okay, great. Oh, Matt, oh, you are here. Hello, I didn't say hello, you are here. So Dallin Crawford, and I don't believe he ended up coming, and neither did Johnny Layman's, unless I miss them coming. Okay, great. So I'll let these two, oh, is Johnny back here? Oh, there, come on, no, Dallin? Okay, all right. I was like, no, you guys are swimmers. I know these guys. They're not, that's great. Anyway, we couldn't be more proud again. The hard work and determination that they put into and the academic excellence, the amount of time that they put into their studies here really contributed a lot. And it's such a great honor. They have to be thrilled with their success, and I hope their families are for all the hard work that they've done to stand beside them and the support that they've given them over their entire school career. And so I'll let each of you come up, say your names once again, and then talk about where you've been in Pooter School District and where you're going to go.
I'm Madeline Patine. I went to Timnith Elementary, Canard Middle School, and Fossil Ridge High School. And I'm going to CU Boulder next year to study astrophysics.
And I'm David Perkins. I went to Zach Elementary, then Canard Middle School, and then Fossil Ridge High School. And next year, I'll be going to CU Boulder to study aerospace engineering, so.
Mr. Schaefer, would you like to come introduce the National Merit Scholar finalist from Liberty Common?
Sure. Well, thank you, and good afternoon, good evening, Board. I think there's only two from my school out of the other five or not here, but I see Ben Siple here and Joshua Rorba. Why don't you guys come on up? And David, excuse me, Josh was right next to him. Sorry about that, David. I apologize. You know, our scholars here at the school that are represented today are extraordinarily hard workers, and they've taken academics and kind of made it a team sport. So these are a couple of the captains here who have excelled not only academically, but in terms of leadership in the school, in terms of our house system and robotics and our school treasurer, as well as our robotics teams, soccer, and sports as well. These guys, as well as the others who couldn't be here tonight, really just personify the virtues and values that we celebrate at the school: prudence, temperance, justice, fortitude, gratitude, and patriotism, and our keystone virtue of wisdom. If you want to know what all those things look like wrapped up in one and together, there they are, right there. So, fellas, why don't you let everybody know, and your parents are here as well, they're primary teachers. And Rex Siple, Ben's dad, also is a teacher at the school. So tell everybody where you're headed to.
Hi, I'm Ben Siple. I attended Liberty for five years, and I'm going to Lewis and Clark College to study biochemistry.
I am David Rorva. And let's see, I went to Trout Core Knowledge and then transferred over to Liberty Common. And I'll be going to CSU studying computer engineering.
We do have a National Merit Scholar finalist from Pooter High School, Ms. Ariel Roy. And she's not here this evening, Ms. McKay. Okay, so we'll do a round of applause for Ariel in absentia. Dr. Woodall, if you'd like to introduce your Rocky finalist.
Thanks for having us here. I appreciate it. Just an opportunity to recognize our students is amazing. I do want to mention, too, on the National Hispanic Recognition, we had Xavier Edgren, unfortunately was not able to make it tonight, but he was also a winner of the National Hispanic Recognition. And we had three National Merit finalists. Brandon, why don't you come on up? Only one was able to make it tonight. Our first two, Russ Huang was our valedictorian, heading to Johns Hopkins. Noel Boynton was our salutatorian, going to CU Boulder. And I was going to introduce Brandon with where he was going and what he's majoring in, but I will let Brandon do that, if you're comfortable with that. Go for it.
Hi. So I'll be going to CSU, and I will be majoring in computer science, and I'll be minoring in political science. So I actually didn't live in Colorado until junior year, where I went to Rocky. Before then, I lived in California, and before that, in Ohio. I rather not stay the specific schools that I went to, because I actually can't remember them all.
Well, on behalf of the Board, I'd like to congratulate all of our scholars. You guys have all worked hard, and the school district is very proud of all of you. And I think that also that we can see, because you're also spread across all the schools, that you all had great teachers and great support. And I think that you're all going to have great futures, and we're looking forward to hearing back from you. And I hope you'll come back and tell us what you've all done. Congratulations.
Thank you.
While they're finishing up what we call the Walk of Fame, Mr. McKinstry, would you like to join me up here? And Director Donovan? So now, we're going to talk about, we've gone from scholars, and now we're going to go to our athletic champions. And with us, we have District Athletic Director, Mr. Russ McKinstry. He's going to talk about our athletic championships this year.
Good evening, Dr. Smizer and Board of Education. I'm here tonight to talk about the fantastic athletic season we had this sports, this spring season. We're very blessed to have some great athletes in our district. And tonight, we get to recognize the best of the best, the elite of the elite. And we're really fortunate that all four of our large, comprehensive high schools are represented. So I think that's really awesome, that we have champions from all four high schools. We're going to start, first of all, with Kendall Wilson, Athletic Director from Pooter High School, who will talk about our tennis champion.
Good evening, Board of Education. Dr. Smizer, I wanted to thank you for your continued support for athletics and the impact that it has on both these young men and women. I have the pleasure of talking a little bit about Coach Acton. She is a Pooter alumni, and we were fortunate enough that she returned to Pooter to teach math and coach tennis. Coach Acton has coached both for our boys' and girls' program, and this year, she completes her 28th season as the varsity girls' tennis coach. Coach Acton runs a no-cut program. This provides many girls the opportunity to participate and to learn the game. She holds numerous regional titles and consistently qualifies girls for state each year. She has coached five state champions and is proud of the number of girls who have come through our program. So it is my honor to introduce Coach Acton.
Thank you for inviting us here tonight. And I would like to congratulate all of the honorees tonight and the state champions. It's an honor to be here tonight to recognize Kai Acton, not only as her coach, but of course, as her mother. She had a fabulous season. She finished, first of all, she's finished her junior year at Pooter High School in the International Baccalaureate Program, played number-one singles for me. And she had a great season, finished 9-0 in dual matches, finished second at two tournaments, was undefeated in postseason play, won her conference. The coaches of the Front Range League named her as Front Range League Player of the Year. Went down, run regionals, which qualified her for the state tournament. I would have to say, she probably put more hours on the court than any other 5A tennis athlete, over nine hours. And her finals was the longest we've ever watched, three hours, 45 minutes or so. So it was an epic match. We don't know if it's the longest in history, but it was, Kendall said, longer than a football game, so. A little bit about her, she has a beautiful game. Her weapon of choice would be her forehand. She's a fierce competitor. I think her opponents would say she has a no-quit attitude. But I think what I'm most proud of is how she conducts herself on the court. She's a lady on and off the court. She respects herself, the game, and her opponents, competes with integrity and grace, and represents herself, our family, Pooter High School, and this district with class. So very proud of your accomplishments, Kai.
I have the opportunity, I'm very privileged, to be able to travel outside the region to play tennis tournaments. But one of my favorite things is playing for my high school and school district, because the team is amazing, but also I get to represent Fort Collins. And I'm proud to be a Tavelli Tiger, CLP Pirate, and now a Pooter Impala. Thank you.
Now, it's my pleasure to introduce the 5A Athletic Director of the Year, Wayne Malamog from Rocky Mountain High School.
I would also like to echo what Kendall said with regards to district support for athletics. I've been in this game a long time, and I've traveled around the state. And I just want you to know the appreciation that we all have as coaches, as athletes, and teachers, and administrators. The support that we get in this district is phenomenal. And the representation that we have is obviously phenomenal. So once again, thank you for all you do and the support that you give to our programs, because it's vital, and I think it's healthy, and the character education that we provide through sport is very important. I'd like to introduce Kate Hanson and Gabby McDonald, if they could come on up. One of our state champions, Gabby McDonald, I'm going to let Coach Hanson talk a little bit specifically about her, but I will just say this about Gabby. She would be able to compete and compete with fierce pride in any endeavor that she would choose to make. I think she's been a, what, a five-sport athlete at Rocky Mountain High School. She's currently a three-sport athlete. But she also played softball, and had she continued playing softball, I'm sure she'd been a great competitor there as well. So I'd like to introduce Coach Hanson, who will say just a few things about Gabby.
So thank you all for having us here. Gabby, I don't know what to say about her. She's an absolute special kid, special athlete. I've been doing this, I've been in athletics for over 25 years now, and I don't think I've ever seen an athlete or been witness to an athlete quite like her. She's one of a kind. I know, once in a lifetime in my coaching career, she, this season, she was undefeated in both her shot put and discus competitions. She was a conference champ in both and a state champion in both. And she was, set the state meet record in the discus as well. So she's just a special kid, an amazing athlete, and I can't be more proud of her. And thank you for taking me along with, for the ride with you, so.
So I went to Johnson Elementary School, Weber Middle School, and then currently, I'm at Rocky Mountain High School, I'll be a senior there next year. And then after that, I'm going to CSU to play track and soccer.
Now, we'll bring up Mr. Kadu, Skip Kadu, who will talk about the Fort Collins State Champions.
Thank you, Russ, and thank you also, Board, for giving us this time to honor these student athletes. It's my job as Athletic Director at Fort Collins High School is, it's a busy, but it's very enjoyable, because I get to spend a lot of time with a lot of really good teacher coaches and student athletes. And the work they do in our community and competing around the state is really a great thing to be a part of. And like Kendall and Wayne said, thank you for your support and all of that to make this happen. I'd like to bring up Coach Conrad Christ and Audra Koopman. They are here today. Audra is our state championship this year in track. You know, and Audra, I, this is weird, but I get lost in what event it is, long jump, right? Okay. Mr. Christ.
All right. Thanks for having us again. Lauren Greger is also state champion for us in the 800 and 1600, second in the 32. She couldn't make it tonight, she's working. She's headed to the University of Arkansas on a full-ride track and cross-country scholarship. Lauren, and she's been honored here pretty much every year since she's been a freshman, has more state titles at our school than any other kid in school history. And she is currently ranked third in the nation in the mile, so she is a special kid as well. Audra here, like Mr. Kadu says, can't keep track of what event she's in, because she pretty much does everything. I told her this at the end of the year at our awards night. She's probably the best athlete I've ever seen come out of Fort Collins High School since I've been there in the last eight years, maybe in school history. A big, tall kid, she plays volleyball, runs track for us. She's a 28-inch standing vert, which means she can almost touch the rim. And that is impressive out of a high school kid. So she is the defending state champion in long jumps. This is the second year in a row that she's won that event. She is headed to Penn State on a full-ride track scholarship. But don't let that mistake you, she's also a 4.0, grade-point-average kid. So have her come up.
So I went to Riffenberg Elementary, Leshaw Middle School, and I just graduated from Fort Collins High School. So thanks.
Now, it's my pleasure to introduce Brandon Carlucci from Fossil Ridge High School.
Well, I am certainly not going to be the one AD that doesn't say thank you on behalf of athletics. So yeah, yeah, I have an overkill here. No, thank you, Board, for having us. And Dr. Smizer, Cabinet, as well. And obviously, I think all four of us as athletic directors, we're in this business because we know the role athletics played in our lives as a part of the complete education, and we're passionate about that. And certainly, we couldn't do it without you, so we do thank you for that. I've got the pleasure tonight of introducing our, well, I'll introduce our swim coach. But you are looking here at a couple of our, this is the three-time defending state champion, 5A boys' swim team from Fossil Ridge, so give them a round of applause. Swimming is kind of one of those sports that doesn't get a whole lot of hype, and we kind of forget about it, and then we tune in for two weeks every four years as we watch the Olympics. And, you know, even though it's a big deal at Fossil, it doesn't get a lot of fanfare just because of the nature of the sport. And so, you know, they don't do it for any other reason, except for the fact that they love the sport. And all I can say about swimmers is they work. They work really, really hard, and you don't just dip your toe in the pool. If you're going to be a swimmer, you're going to be a swimmer, and you might not be able to be a lot of other things, and it takes that type of dedication. In fact, we were at the state meet, and I was talking to Coach Morehouse, and, or one of the coaches, it might have been Coach Morehouse, and this was on a Saturday. It was the finals. The guys that already had the tournament wrapped up, they wrapped it up Friday night. The Saturday was really just an exercise, wasn't it, guys? Which was pretty neat. And he said, "Yeah, Brandon," he said, "they'll be in the pool Monday with their club team." So there was no time for celebration and resting and relaxing. It was right back to it for their summer program and to get into it that way. So we've got a lot of hard workers at Fossil Ridge, and we've got the weight room full, the field's full right now, and the field's getting ready for next season. But certainly, I would say, some of our most dedicated and hardest workers are our boys' and girls' swim, and the time they put in, and being in the pool at what time, guys, in the morning?
5:15.
5:15, in the pool in the morning. So congratulations to you. What a legacy you guys have left at Fossil Ridge. Three great big trophies in the trophy case. You're going to be able to come back and show your kids. And we've got a couple juniors up here, and so we'll make a run at a fourth next year. I'll bring up Mark Morehouse. Mark, boys' swimming kind of gets lost as a spring sport, and so awards sometimes, they fall in those summer months. But Mark Morehouse was virtually named the Coach of the Year for 2016, after they repeated at every level, the state and the national level as well. So the only reason he didn't win it again this year was because I think they wanted to share the love a little bit. But the 2016 State Coach of the Year, National Coach of the Year, Coach Mark Morehouse.
All right. Thanks for the opportunity to recognize these guys, and congratulations to all the state champions. I read about the tennis match, and I was like, wow, that's, four-hour tennis matches harder than what we do, sometimes. So I'm just going to introduce these guys. And we had 25 members of our team qualify for the state championships this year, which is over 50% of our team. So this is just kind of a small group of the guys. So we're going to start with Bryce Henry here, who's a junior. And here's what I want to say about Bryce. This was his first year qualifying for the state championships. And he's a really good example of the impact athletics can have on a kid's, kind of their whole academic career. So one of Bryce's teachers showed me his college essay. And really, what he said in there is, he struggled in swimming and decided that he wanted to do better, and used that kind of as a springboard to do better in everything he does at school. And his grades have gone way up since his freshman year, and his swimming accomplishments have gone way up. He was a critical member of our team this year and is going to be a big part of our team next year. Should I have these guys one at a time, say where schools they went to, or do it at the end? Okay. All right. So then, next, we have Matt Garrity here. So Matt is truly one of the best swimmers in the state. He was third in two individual events and part of two state champion relays. He's an All-American, and he's a junior, and he'll be back next year. Next, we have Maxim Konradenko. He is one of our senior captains. This was, Maxim's been on our state team for several years, but this was his first year making finals and scoring points. And Maxim is also an academic All-American, which is a pretty big deal. And then finally, we have Sam Wybarra, and Sam is another one of our team captains. He was, I think, fourth and fifth in his individual events on two state championship relays. He is also an All-American. So an All-American means you're one of the top 100 people in your event in the country. I just looked the other day, our medley relay, which Sam was on, is ranked seventh in the country right now. And our two free relays that Matt was on, both of those are both ranked, I think, one's 12th and one's 13th. So that's, in terms of the history of our program, that's the highest we've ever been, which is pretty cool. So I'll let these guys introduce themselves and say where they're going. And yeah, thanks.
I'm Sam Wybarra. I moved here from Indiana, and I went straight to Preston Middle School, and then I attended Fossil Ridge. And I'll be taking a gap year and swimming all year, and then committing in the fall.
Hi, I'm Maxim. I moved here when I was in third grade, so I went to Zach for elementary school, then went to Canard, and then I went to Fossil, and I'm going to see you next year, so.
Hi, I'm Matt. I started at Warner Elementary, went to Preston Middle School, and now I will be a senior at Fossil Ridge.
I'm Bryce. I went to Bacon Elementary, Preston Middle School, and next year, I'll be a senior at Fossil.
Once again, Mr. Wayne Malamog from Rocky Mountain High School.
Okay, I'd like to talk a little bit about our baseball program. Coach Roy Trippi, one of our assistants, is here, along with Trey Wagner, Spencer John Rowe, and Austin Musial. Talk a little bit about our, I'll let Coach talk a little bit about the season, but I'll just talk a little bit about our program. If, you know, a program that is, the head coach is Coach Scott Bullock, who was the 5A baseball Coach of the Year this year. And he's been recognized as that 5A coach on several occasions. The legacy that Coach Bullock has created at Rocky Mountain High School is pretty incredible. In the last 11 years, our baseball program has been represented in the state final eight times in those years, and we've won the state title six times and finished second the others. So it's quite an incredible program. And Coach Trippi has been a longtime assistant for Coach Bullock, and I'll let Coach Trippi talk a little bit about these kids.
Well, like everybody said, thank you for recognizing all the hard work that our players have put in throughout the season. And one of my favorite things about this team is, I think it, they represent really what a lot of education is about. We talk about student athletes all the time, and there was a lot of perseverance and critical thinking and problem-solving that happened throughout the year. This was a team that at one point was 1-5 on the season and finished where they did. And so you can imagine, being 1-5 as a coach, we're doing a lot of problem-solving and critical thinking, trying to figure out what critical thinking, trying to figure out what's happening here. And like most teenagers, they came up with a solution, and they presented it to us as it was our pregame music. That's what was wrong. And so whatever it might have been, it worked, and we are feeling very fortunate to, once again, have a chance to celebrate a state championship because they're not easy. And I know that all of these other athletes and programs up here will tell you, they are not easy to win. So these players have definitely been very, very easy to work with, and I think that's been one of our favorite things as coaches. They definitely can demonstrate to you that when you are doing something that you love, all the hard work is easy. And they definitely put in a lot of hard work. So I'm going to let these guys introduce themselves and talk about where they went to school and what their future plans are here. So thank you once again.
I'm Trey Wagner. I was -- went to St. Joseph Elementary School, and then I was homeschooled, and then went to Liberty Common, and then went to Rocky Mountain. And then next year, I'm going to University of Gonzaga to study business.
I'm Spencer Gondro. I went to McGrath Elementary, and then Weber Middle School, and then Rocky, and I'll be playing baseball next year at Scottsdale Community College in Arizona.
I'm Austin Maciel. I went to Warner Elementary, then to Preston Middle School, then Rocky Mountain High School. I'm going to Chapman University in Southern California next year.
On behalf of the Board of Education, we're proud of all our students and our student athletes, and I would like to give a nod to the Colorado newspaper for the coverage, the good sports coverage, because when we can't be at these games, some of us, I know it's difficult to fathom, but some of us think that it's more exciting to go watch a sporting event in Pooter School District than attend a school board meeting. So sometimes that happens. And just a personal note, in a former life, I was a school bus driver for Pooter School District, and I drove many of these teams to their competitions, including one time when I went to watch the Rocky Mountain High School baseball team at the state playoffs. And some of you may remember it because they got coverage in the Colorado, and that baseball team, I don't know if they still are superstitious, but they used to be superstitious and keep goldfish in the dugout 24/7. And I didn't realize it, but they took the goldfish to the game with them. And I got on the bus to visit my former colleague, bus driver, and apparently, the five-gallon bucket with the fish in it didn't get secured in the back of the bus. So it traveled, it slid the length of the aisle when it came to a stop and crashed into the dashboard, and luckily, not many of the fish were injured, except they might have been traumatized. So if they still do that, I think that was the year you didn't win the state championship, and it could have been because the good-luck charm got a little shaken up. So congratulations to all the champions and all of our students and student athletes.
to talk about our Mary Hall Awards. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Go for it.
Board Directors, Dr. Smizer and Cabinet, first, thank you for allowing me to come forward and present the Mary Hall Award recipients this evening. So this year, on April 20th, we held the 30th Annual Mary Hall Awards banquet and had staff, students, parents, community members celebrating 16 nominees for the four awards and the four recipients of the awards. It was a great evening. Oftentimes, though, people ask me, who is Mary Hall and why are these awards named after her? So Mary Hall was a longtime special educator and employee of Pooter School District. She started her career in the 1960s, prior to IDEA in 94-142, as a speech and language clinician, and ended her career in the 80s as an Assistant Director of Special Education. And the awards were named after her 30 years ago because of the dedication she showed towards students with disabilities, as well as the impact she not only had on special education, but on Pooter School District. Tonight, two of the four award winners are here. I want to talk for a minute about the two who aren't here. So we have, excuse me, Greg Neal is a physical education teacher who runs an integrated program at Fossil Ridge High School, and he was our collaborative award winner. Kim Eberhard is a special education teacher who works with our students with serious emotional disabilities. She was our special education teacher award winner, and she was not able to be here this evening. But we do have our honorary award winners, and there are three of them because they come together. And the honorary award is given to a classified staff member or community member who's gone above and beyond to assist or volunteer with students with disabilities. And tonight, we have Jim, Nancy, and Ollie Patella. And they are our Mary Hall honorary winners. So Ollie wasn't quite sure whether he could wait or not, but he did a good job. I thought for a minute he might bark. So, Jim, Nancy, and Ollie are with HABIC Human-Animal Bonding Colorado Team, and they volunteer throughout Pooter School District, HABIC does. And Jim and Nancy have been with HABIC for four years, and specifically have worked at Shepherdson Elementary and Fossil Ridge High School recently with our students with disabilities. So HABIC has been around since 1993 and is a collaboration with Colorado State University and their social work department, and they do work within Pooter School District to assist all types of students. So I wanted to give a quote that came from somebody who works with Nancy, Jim, and Ollie. So Jasmine is a school social worker, and she says this about Nancy, Jim, and Ollie. "They tailor the students' sessions to fit their needs and goals, but also add special touches to find out what students like. We have seen our students' independence, responsibility, confidence, self-esteem, ability to follow directions, and problem-solve improve over time as they have worked with Jim, Nancy, and Ollie." So thank you.
Well, thank you so much for your kindness. We really appreciate it, and thanks for giving us this opportunity to address you. Integrated Services with Sarah as the director, and Fossil Ridge High School with Julie as the principal, and Pooter School District in general with Lila Bartman and all the help she's given us. We really appreciate. Just amazing organizations. The people in these organizations, the teachers, the counselors, the social workers, the therapists we've worked with, they really care about the students. It's really remarkable to see, and it's a joy to work with these folks. They're very creative. They've developed programs such as Unified Sports. They really give these students a lot of self-esteem. And if you haven't seen a Unified Sports activity, I mean, we were just blown away by seeing all the students, both the ones without special needs as the ones with, and how much support they gained from everyone. So it really was remarkable. So the teacher, or the counselor, or the therapist, they're with us at every session, and they're the ones that have the experience with the students. So they can come up with, and they do come up with, a list of goals, and they give that to Nancy and me, and then we take those goals and develop a plan with our dog, Ollie, to meet these goals and hopefully exceed these goals. We really appreciate you guys allowing HABIC to be a part of what's happening here. The objective of HABIC is to help people and also to break the ice with our dogs, to encourage our students, or the Pooter School District students, to actually think creatively, communicate well, and be open to instruction and advice. And breaking that ice makes that happen. So the dog is really the one that does the work. So we've worked with a girl with cerebral palsy, and the only way she can communicate is with sign language. And she's made a lot of progress. At the end of the year, she was able to get the water bowl out of the bag, fill the water bowl with water. She walked the dog around the building, and the counselors and the teachers and social worker were excited about this because they believe that she can actually use these skills at a vet's office or at a kennel. The second student we had, the objective was to improve his assertiveness. And at the end of the year, he conducted a program where he commanded our dog, and he used a very strong voice, but also a very caring voice, and he was able to go through all the commands that our dog knows. So again, thank you very much for this opportunity to serve you folks, to volunteer. It really has opened our eyes to the remarkable things that you folks are doing with students with special needs. Thank you.
The next award winner that's here this evening is Lila Bartman, and she is the recipient of the Specialized Services Award for Mary Hall. So come on forward. Lila is our lead occupational therapist, and she's also our professional practice expert in her field. A colleague of Lila says this about her. "Lila Bartman has been a leader, exceptional colleague, mentor, collaborator, and teacher within Pooter School District for the past 19 years. Lila's efforts are far-reaching. As the department lead, she has facilitated and led varied professional development opportunities, both for occupational therapists as well as specialized service professionals in general. Lila's effort in direct practice with the students and families during her 19-year tenure has helped them be successful to the best of their abilities." Lila Bartman.
Thank you, and good evening. I appreciate this opportunity to see you again. And I'm on the tail end of a summer cold, so I will make this real brief. I do want to let you know that I take my job role and my responsibility very seriously. It has been such a privilege to work with children from preschool age on through our transition programs for all of these years. And to see our kids come in, the way they arrive at school, we have no control over. Some of them come bouncing in the door, they're happy and eager, and they're ready to go. Others, they don't have the opportunities, maybe, that we have in our lives, and we don't know how they will arrive. And we take them as they are, and we greet them with open arms, and it's been really a privilege and honor to be able to support these kids across all grade levels and help them, help them meet their goals. Under Sarah's great leadership and with partners such as Jim and Nancy and Ollie, I couldn't ask for anything more. So thank you.
So I just want to say that above all else, we take very seriously the services these people do, and it's incredibly meaningful to all of us, so we thank you. But it would be hard for me to let this opportunity pass to stand up at a podium and say thank you to a dog as well. So thanks for lightening our hearts and making us all feel better tonight. So on behalf of the Board, we appreciate well everything you've done, so.
She is the president of the Pooter School District Foundation and Mr. Patterson, and we're going to talk about our Excellence in Education Award winners from this year.
Hi, as Daniel said, I'm Misty Nugent with the PSD Foundation Board, and I too would like to thank the Board of Education for your partnership with the foundation and your amazing vision for our partnership going forward. So the Excellence in Education Award is a really great way for us to recognize the amazing teachers in our district and the things that they're doing with our students every day. And the EIE Award has been a tradition in Pooter School District for about 25 years in one form or another. And the foundation sponsors a banquet in February at which we recognize some of the teachers in our district. And actually, through the great work of Susan Kautowski, who is also a foundation board member, there's been a new vision for the EIE Awards in an effort to make it a little bit more team-based and excitement and a little, just more emotional, I think, for the teachers. And so starting this year, we are doing, recognizing the teachers through the feeder system. And we started with Pooter High School feeder system this year. And for those of you who have not been to the event, I would like to invite you next year because it is really fun. It's really cool. We had a lot of schools show up in their school gear with pom-poms and cheering for their teachers, and it was really cool. So I'm going to go through the list of teachers that we recognized this year. Each of the elementary and middle schools and Pooter High School in the feeder system nominated one teacher to be recognized, and then there was one teacher selected as the Pooter School District Teacher of the Year from that group. So I know some of you are here this evening. If you're here, please step up. I believe we've got a certificate for you as well. So the teachers that were recognized this year are Pamela Sky from Cache-Lapooter Elementary Cheryl Duke from Cache-Lapooter Middle School, Kathy Zabel from Dunn Elementary School, Kendra Neal from Istone Elementary, Kyla Walker from Lincoln Middle School, Jeff Brubaker from Pooter High School, Sarah Bayer from Polaris Elementary. Oh, no. She's a middle school, isn't she, Joan?
High school.
High school. I'm sorry. Sorry. Okay. Carrie Kim from Putnam Elementary School, Casey Ross from Red Feather Lakes Elementary School, Carolyn Kammer from Rice Elementary School, Rob Deacon from Tavelli, Amanda Ferguson from Wellington Middle School, and our Pooter School District Teacher of the Year was Melissa Hudson from Irish. Daniel, are they, do they each come up to speak, or?
Rob will give them the certificate.
Okay. So if you'd like to step up, Rob will give the certificate, and Melissa will have you say a few words.
Nobody told me.
Congratulations, thank you very much.
I wonder the percentage of teachers who are terrified to talk in front of adults? I don't know why that is, but not terrified is a little extreme, but anyways. But I do want to thank the Board in this district. I'm very proud to
I wonder the percentage of teachers who like are terrified to talk in front of adults. I don't know why that is, but not terrified is a little extreme, but anyways. But I do want to thank the Board in this district. I'm very proud to work in this district. I said it at the banquet as well. I just think this district gives incredible support to their teachers and to their students. And I have friends who teach all around the United States and I really truly feel that's an accurate statement to say how we are very well-supported. And my kids go to this, my daughter goes to Lester and they both went, so my son goes to Irish and I'm constantly impressed by the teaching and the athletics. Yay, athletics, I love athletics too. So, I do feel like they're very well-supported in that. And the banquet was awesome and it really felt wonderful to be appreciated in that way. And it was really emotional since we had no idea who was going to win and all had to prepare a speech. I'm glad I knew I had to prepare a speech just in case. But I really did appreciate that recognition. So, I hope that that continues and the teachers keep being supported in that way. It was truly, truly a wonderful evening. And, yeah, all the teachers in this district are amazing and serve recognition. So, thank you very much, Pooter School District and Board and Dr. Smizer for all you do for us. Thank you.
So, I'll just say that clearly, teachers are one of the linchpins in the success of our students. And so, we're pleased and very proud to honor excellence in that field and all of the great things that you do for the students of the district. So, thank you so much and congratulations.